The Columbus City Council will now come to order for the November 21st, 2022 council meeting. In compliance with the Open Meeting Act revised statute 84-1407, a current copy of this act is on the wall in the meeting room. Madam Clerk, would you please call roll?
Bulkeley?
Here.
Augustine Schulte?
Here.
Barr?
Here.
Heimer?
Here.
Jablonsky?
Here.
Creshaw?
Here.
Lor?
Here.
Roth?
Here.
Schelling?
Here.
Mayor Bulkeley, the roll has been called.
Thank you. Mrs. Council President.
Our Father, thank you for the opportunity to serve our fellow citizens. Please give us your wisdom and guidance to make the proper decisions entrusted to this governmental body. May our conduct show respect, honor, and courtesy to each other as well as to all our citizens. Amen.
Good evening. I welcome everyone to tonight's council meeting. If at any time during our meeting anyone in our audience would like to get up and address an item on our agenda, we'd ask that you please come forward, give your name and address, and we'd ask that you keep your comments to five minutes or less. With that, we'll move on to the consent agenda.
Item four, consent agenda. The following items are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a city council member or citizen so requests, in which event the item will be removed from consent status and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. Item four A, minutes of the November 7th, 2022 city council meeting. Item four B, finance department reports. Item four C, quote from Laika Geospatial Incorporated in the amount of $26,106 for global navigation satellite system reference receiver for the engineering department. For D, resolution number R22-134, approving the year-end certification to the Nebraska Department of Transportation for Richard J. Bogus as street superintendent for January 1, 2022 through December 31, 2022. Resolution, or item four E, resolution number R22-135, continuing the Columbus Platte County enhanced 911 service surcharge of $1 per month on each local exchange access line physically terminating in the 911 service area. Item four F, resolution number R22-136, reaffirming the city's intent to provide or expand municipal solid waste collection services. Item four G, resolution number R22-137, approving the application of Walker Rental Properties LLC for agricultural deferment of special assessments relating to the Street Improvement District #188, 23rd Street and Shady Lake Road from 54th Avenue to the West Corporate Limits. Item four H, resolution number R22-138, approving the application of Walker Rental Properties LLC for agricultural deferment of special assessment relating to the Street Improvement District #189, 48th Avenue from 23rd Street to Bradshaw Park. Item four I, resolution number R22-139, approving the application of Reverend Wayne S. Pavella Trust for the agricultural deferment of special assessment relating to the Stormwater Sewer District #10, south of Armory Drive and Cozy Drive intersection. Item four J, resolution number R22-140, authorizing payment of various improvement projects. And item four K, payroll and bills on file. Mr. Mayor and Council, is there anything you would like removed from the consent agenda?
Mr. Mayor, I move that the items on the consent agenda be approved as presented.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes. We move on to special presentations. I have a couple of proclamations this evening. I would start with a proclamation for Small Business Saturday. Whereas the government of Columbus, Nebraska celebrates our local small businesses and the contributions they make to our local economy. And whereas, according to the United States Small Business Administration, there are 32.5 million small businesses in the United States. Small businesses represent 99.7% of firms with paid employees. Small businesses are responsible for 62% of net new jobs created since 1995. And small businesses employ 46.8% of the employees in the private sector of the United States. And whereas, 79% of consumers understand the importance of supporting the small businesses in their community on Small Business Saturday. 70% report the day makes them want to encourage others to shop small, independently owned retailers. And 66% report that that day makes them want to shop small all year long. And whereas, 58% of shoppers reported they shopped online with a small business. And 54% reported they dined or ordered takeout from a small restaurant, bar, or cafe on Small Business Saturday in 2021. And whereas, Columbus, Nebraska supports our local businesses that create jobs, boost our local economy, and preserve our communities. And whereas, advocating groups as well as public and private organizations across the country have endorsed the Saturday after Thanksgiving as Small Business Saturday. Now therefore, I, James B. Bulkeley, Mayor of the City of Columbus, do hereby proclaim Saturday, November 26th, as Small Business Saturday. And urge the residents of our community and the communities across the country to support the small businesses and merchants on this day and throughout the year. My other, I have a second special proclamation. I'm going to go up front to do this one. Bear with me while I get there. As most of you know, maybe some at home don't realize, tonight's a special night. It's the last evening we will have Councilman Dennis Creshaw sitting with us. So I'd like to take a moment and thank Dennis for his last eight years of service to his community and enjoying all of us on our Monday evenings as we've sat here in front of the public, serving them and trying to make Columbus a better place. And I have a proclamation I'd like to read and give to Dennis for your service, a little bit we could do to say thank you. Whereas Dennis Creshaw was elected as council member by citizens of the 2nd Ward in 2014 and was re-elected in 2018. Whereas Dennis Creshaw has diligently served as council member for eight years and has helped to advance numerous positive changes in the community during his tenure. And whereas Dennis Creshaw has served the community well as vice chairman of the Public Property Safety and Works Committee and a member of the Committee of the Whole since joining the city council. And whereas Dennis Creshaw has also served as an active member of the Community Development Agency and the Facilities Corporation for the City of Columbus. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the mayor and city council of the City of Columbus, Nebraska, on behalf of the City of Columbus and its citizens, we hereby go on record as expressing our appreciation to city council member Dennis Creshaw for the foresight, steadfast devotion, and leadership he has provided to the City of Columbus while serving as a council member for the 2nd Ward. Dennis, thank you very much.
You're here.
I think you just figured out the computer, too.
Yeah, that's why I got that figured out.
All right, we'll move forward to public hearings.
Item 7A, public hearing, redevelopment plan for Innate Concepts Redevelopment Project, Redevelopment Area 12 located east of 48th Avenue between 34th and 36th Street. The Planning Commission removed this public hearing from their agenda at the request of the applicant.
So do we need to do?
There's a motion, recommended motion to remove.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the public hearing be removed from the agenda.
Second. We have a motion and a second to remove this public hearing from the agenda. Any discussion?
I would just...
When can they bring this back?
Whenever they choose.
Okay, there's no time?
No. The request to remove from the agenda came from the applicant and the conversation I had with them was that even with approval of tax increment financing with high interest rates and materials costs very high right now, they still couldn't make the project go. So hopefully something with the economy will give and they'll be able to resurrect a housing project here.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? All right, seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item 7B, public hearing, application of Foreman Properties LLC to rezon property located west of 63rd Avenue, north of Highway 81 from MLC 1 Light Industrial District to B2 General Commercial and amend the future land use map of the comprehensive plan.
Is there anyone here to speak against this public hearing? Is there anyone here to speak for this public hearing?
Mr. Mayor, move the public hearing be closed.
Second. We have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item 7B, one ordinance number 22-28, approving the rezoning.
Mr. Mayor, I move the rules be suspended and ordinance number 22-28 be read by number only.
Second. We have a motion and a second to suspend the rules. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item 7C, public hearing, application of Granville Custom Homes Incorporated to rezon lots 7, 8...
No, no, no. We just suspended the rule.
Oh, I'm sorry. Ordinance number 22-28.
Take my thunder.
Sorry, Charlie.
Mr. Mayor, I move for the adoption of ordinance number 22-28.
Second. We have a motion and a second to adopt ordinance number 22-28. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item 7C, public hearing, application of Foreman Properties LLC to rezon property located west of 63rd Avenue, north of Highway 81 from MLC 1 Light Industrial District to B2 General Commercial and amend the future land use map of the comprehensive plan.
Is there anyone here to speak against this public hearing? Is there anyone here to speak for this public hearing?
Mr. Mayor, move the public hearing be closed.
Second. We have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item 7B, one ordinance number 22-28, approving the rezoning.
Mr. Mayor, I move the rules be suspended and ordinance number 22-28 be read by number only.
Second. We have a motion and a second to suspend the rules. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item 7C, public hearing, application of Granville Custom Homes Incorporated to rezon lots 7, 8, 9, and 10, Block B Frontier Park 2nd Edition, 1642 East 30th Street, 1646 East 30th Street, 3056 East 17th Avenue, and 2994 East 17th Avenue, from R2 to family residential to R3, multiple family residential, and amend the future land use map of the comprehensive plan.
Is there anyone here to speak against this public hearing? Anyone here to speak for? Please come forward.
Excuse me, I'm Brett Comf, 39, 30, 48th Avenue. And I just had a few questions, I guess, more or less, with the future land use map. You know, how often is that changed? If it's my understanding that that ground was just changed here very recently, you know, from R1 and R2. And so, am I right when I'm saying that field out there was just changed recently?
Probably a couple of years ago, within the last 24 months, maybe.
Yeah. And so, I guess, you know, it concerns me a little bit. You know, it's hard to tell people, you know, that are moving into a neighborhood where you have R1s there, you know? And then what's this field going to be? Well, it was just rezoned here two years ago on a future land map here, and here we go. Now it's going to go R3, could be multifamily, you know, two-story type thing, right where they're built a house, you know, where it was R1?
And that is why in the land development ordinance, any rezoning with, if a property's within 300 feet, they're required to get a mailing and there's a sign posted on the...
Yeah, no, I understand that. I just, you know, people are very gun-shy about coming up and presenting themselves, you know, really. So I'm just, I don't know. I mean, I'm stupid. It doesn't really involve me, but people ask me about this field. What's this field going to be? Well, it was just rezoned here, so, you know, more or less it's going to be residential housing here. And then now we're going to rezon it again possibly to R3. And to me, I don't know. I just, I think it could be a little better planned out ahead of time, only two years ago, maybe, you know? So, I don't know. I mean, I wish more citizens were here, you know, that lived close by, but I hope you don't base your decision just on if they're here or not. I mean, think about it. Think about, you know, this future land map. I mean, in the past, it seemed like, boy, we never changed that much at all. Now it seems like we change it quite a bit. We're changing it quite a bit to meet the whims of a builder, you know, that changes their mind, or maybe we can, they, you know, don't have it planned out correctly the first time, and now let's just change it, R3. Everything's going through the city. We can get this rezoned to R3 now. So, I mean, that's my concern, you know, just looking at it as a citizen, you know? So...
So a scenario would be, I go to the bank, I borrow enough money to buy a house, I think it's going to be R1, and then tomorrow they change it.
Yeah, you know, that's our job, I mean...
I get a notice because I'm within 300 feet.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I mean, as our, what I do, I mean, people will ask me, well, what's this field going to be? Well, you know, they just got it on the future land map here two years ago, R1, R2, no. So, okay, great, let's move in here, okay? Just going to be residential housing around us. Then here in two years, they're going to change it to R3? I mean, we look pretty bad, I guess. That's my concern. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm just reading in the memorandum, it says if the Planning Commission approves. Did the Planning Commission approve this?
Yes.
It's not stated anywhere, is it?
The Planning Commission did recommend approval.
So I have a question. I was under the impression, too, that if something's R1, we can't rezon it to R3. We have to kind of like go through...
That's...
Is that...
That is not correct.
That's not correct?
No. And it's presently R2.
All right, yeah, because he said, yeah, that's fine. Just so I got that.
And I, you know, and I think one of the things we've got to recognize is conditions change, you know, the, what impacts some of these developments change over time, whether it takes two years for some of that change, or four years, or whatever. So I mean, I want to believe when things are presented in the beginning, they're presented with what the belief is that development's going to be. You know, we had one removed from the, from the agenda tonight because it's not going to do what they had believed it was going to do. So they removed it. But had they moved forward, they might have come to us and wanted to change some things because of changing conditions. I think we've, we've got to take all those things into effect. I understand what Brett's, what Mr. Comf is saying, and I think we have to, we have to weigh those thoughts when we make our decisions. And I think, you know, planning and zoning tries to take that into consideration, and then we have that ability to take it into consideration also.
Yeah, but I think we, we kind of leave out the citizens, you know? We're, we're looking at what the developer wants to do, and like the scenario I said, if I go to the bank and borrow money, and then all of a sudden, my house now is sitting behind a three-story apartment house. You know, is that, is that what I went to the bank to borrow money for? Is this what I, you know, I, at some point, we got to say, you know, let's get it figured out right the first time?
Well, if, if you don't want to ever change anything, then we can do that, I guess. I think...
That's not what I'm saying.
Well, no, but I...
That's not what I'm saying. I said, are we giving the public the same consideration we're giving the developer? That's all I'm asking.
Well, I think, I think we give the public the ability to come forward when we make these decisions. As Mr. Comf said, maybe they don't come forward. We can't bring them, we can't force them in, we can feed them the information. And I understand, a lot of them will say they haven't gotten it, but I don't know where else we can go with the ability to get that information to them.
But in this case, everybody within 300 feet did get a personal mailing.
And what...
And I didn't hear it from anybody, and I don't know that anybody got an email or anything, but they don't have to voice their concern, they don't have to just come to the city council meeting. They can call staff. Rick, did you get anything?
I have not, no.
No, I haven't either.
Councilman.
Mr. Rowmakers, this, lots are a little bit odd-shaped also, are they not? If, if we do a single, single lot?
Stephen Rowmakers, Granville Custom Homes, 4514 Howard Boulevard, Columbus. The lot, the particular lot, I should give a little, can I, yes, they are odd-shaped. I'll answer your question, and thank you for it. So the, this land was, when we acquired it, well, first of all, I'll talk about whether you want to change or not, it was initially owned by the city of Columbus for a school.
No, by the Columbus Public School.
I'm sorry, by CPS. Probably further back than that, it was owned by a farmer. And then it, you know, a school, and then it went into the hands of a group that wanted to do pretty dense development, and then they abandoned their plans, then it came into my hands. I took the zoning from RR, which is real residential, was very limited density, to R2, which is two-family residential, so the operative word being residential. And we have here a lot in the back corner that is like a really odd but large pie-shaped lot with a limited frontage. And, you know, when we first came to rezon, it's, it's hard to know what you're going to do. You sort of blanket rezon. The initial plan was single-family, which for the most part it still is, but we did zone R2 in case we wanted some flexibility to move up the density a little bit. The times have changed dramatically, the Fed has raised interest rates, almost doubled interest rates, so this, so the, sort of that speculative or production-type building has disappeared. So we have this lot in the back quarter, we have the infrastructure built to it, and it probably doesn't work well as a single-family lot because it's like twice to three times as large as a typical lot out there. So we combined it with a couple of surrounding lots to try to get in like an 18, and I don't know the exact density, maybe like an 18 to 22-unit multifamily, but still family, right? Not commercial, not business. We were comfortable doing this because we actually ourselves own most of the land and the entire development that this would be built in. So the question that we have to ask is, can we still sell single-family and townhome projects right alongside of this? And the answer was, yeah, we felt comfortable doing that. So, you know, the first citizen that had to be concerned about the change was myself because I own everything surrounding it, except for the stuff, you know, the old stuff that abuts behind it. There's a couple of older homes that abut behind it, otherwise we own everything surrounding it and the entire field. So it's not the entire field. It didn't go from R1 to R3, it's going from R2 to R3. And it probably makes sense where we've asked it to happen because we have to, we, probably nobody has more of a vested interest in these things being cohesive than, than we do. We sort of took our cue from a project that we did over by the airport in a, in a development we call Farmview, tucked way in the back corner, very similar situation, our 17 conjoined rental units. And they're tucked into a really quiet townhome subdivision, and we've had like zero complaints. And I drive out there twice a week, and I'm in constant contact with all the customers we have out there, and if they didn't like something, they're quick to tell me. So I guess that's the background of that, you know, regarding whether or not I'm supposed to figure out two years in advance what the Fed's going to do with rates, or how the market's going to move and things like that, I can't do it. So part of the reason, you know, the first and foremost consideration is, in, in land development, is the land developer owns the land. It's, it's really his to do as he wishes, you know, subject to sort of the limited controls that the, that the zoning jurisdiction may confer upon them. But if it goes too far restrictive, it becomes a prescriptive taking, and there's all sorts of condemnation problems and things related to that. So really, I'm asking to do something upon my own land. I'm not asking to do something to the neighbor's land. What Realtors should be telling their clients, you know, what I tell my clients is, there's a whole host of possibilities with pieces of land that you're moving next to. It's going to probably go to whatever economically works best for the developer because he's the one that has his money on the line. In this case, we're already developed out there, we're looking for projects that would work, because right now, some of the projects that we had envisioned for out there are just, as you've seen from some that, like from Innate Poling, the economics of things have changed so rapidly that you got to figure it out as you go sometimes.
What about parking?
So all of that would be addressed in the land development ordinance. So I can't go out there and do anything that isn't already addressed in the, on the building side of this project.
Stephen, on your, on the map that they sent to us, you talk about this lot will likely not be part of the multifamily. That's lot number seven?
Well, I noted that on there. I don't know that, I don't know that that would be part of it, but because this is such a process to get to this point, I thought I should toss it in in case we do have a problem with parking restrictions, for example. But I don't want to give up, you know, any more lots on the single-family side than I need to, but at the same time, I want it to be sort of, you might want to say, conservative in how I bring this forward so we don't end up giving ourselves, backing ourselves into a corner.
Rick, if we zone at R3, and that's the number seven is the one I'm talking about, he could still go back and do R2?
Still R1 or R2.
R1, without coming back to us.
Correct.
Okay, okay. So you're covered that way at least.
Well, that's the idea, yep.
Any other questions for Mr. Rowmaker?
Thank you, your explanation was great.
Thank you, Steve.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, move the public hearing be closed.
Second. We have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item 7C, one, ordinance number 22-29, approving the rezoning.
Mr. Mayor, I move the rules be suspended and ordinance number 22-29 be read by number only at this meeting.
Second. We have a motion and a second to adopt ordinance number 22-29. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes. Brings us up to reports of council committees.
Item 10A, Public Finance Judiciary and Personnel Committee of November 15th, 2022. Item 10A1, the proposed changes to Pawnee Park hours and fees. The Public Finance Judiciary and Personnel Committee recommends the hours and fees for Pawnee plunge be approved as presented.
Mayor, move the report be adopted.
Second. We have a motion and a second to adopt these Pawnee plunge hours and fees. Any discussion? Councilman Barr?
Curious as to why we want to charge someone that's not going to swim, is not dressed to swim, $3 to watch their grandchildren swim at this facility and not at the other one?
I guess the same question.
Joe Krippl, I'm the aquatics coordinator for the City of Columbus. The non-swimming fees are put in with the idea that we have family members outside of the parents who are watching their children swim, you know, they're responsible for their kids, so grandparents, aunts and uncles, people who want to come and be part of the environment but don't want to get in part, get in the water. The, the reason this is a concern is because I work at the facility, and I watch grandparents stand and take pictures of their grandkids through the fence, because if they come in, they have to pay full price. And so the thought process behind this, and I've done this at other facilities I work at, is to allow them to come in and be part of the environment without actually swimming. Now, recognizing when they come through the door, they're using our facilities, we're responsible for their safety, et cetera, when they're in there, and so the idea is to charge, plus they're also taking up a seat when they sit... The Public Finance Judiciary and Personnel Committee recommends the hours and fees for Pawnee plunge be approved as presented.
Mayor, move the report be adopted?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt these Pawnee plunge hours and fees. Any discussion? Councilman Barr.
Curious as to why we want to charge someone that's not gonna swim, is not dressed to swim, three dollars to watch their grandchildren swim at this facility and not at the other one?
Joe Krippl, I'm the aquatics coordinator for the city of Columbus. The non-swimming fees are put in with the idea that we have family members outside of the parents who are watching their children swim. You know, they're responsible for their kids. So grandparents, aunts and uncles, people who want to come and be part of the environment but don't want to get in part, get in the water. The, the reason this is a concern is because I work at the facility and I watch grandparents stand and take pictures of their grandkids through the fence. Because if they come in, they have to pay full price. And so the thought process behind this, and I've done this at other facilities I work at, is to allow them to come in and be part of the environment without actually swimming. Now, recognizing when they come through the door, they're using our facilities, we're responsible for their safety, et cetera, when they're in there. And so the idea is to charge, plus they're also taking up a seat when they sit down on a bench or whatever else. And so the idea is that we, we want to, we want to charge them something. And so three dollars was the, the fair price that I came up with. This is something that, when we do the new budget cycle, they'll also introduce for the aquatic center as well. But again, this is that idea for those people who aren't, this isn't sunbathing. This isn't, this is for those family members who want to come in and be part of the environment and don't have to stand outside the fence. And I don't want to charge them ten dollars to sit inside and watch their kid, their grandson or their nephew or niece swim. So that's the idea behind it.
Thank you.
And then from what you said, the, you will look at changing this to the, at the aquatic center in the future?
Yeah, so when we do our budget for the summer, this will be something we'll implement as well. Again, this, this visitor fee is really important. Again, especially when we do birthday parties and stuff like that. So there's families who want to come in and be part of it but have no intention whatsoever to get in the water. So it's allowing them to be in the environment. We, we can take their attendance and stuff like that. And then, like I said, they're still using our facilities, using the toilet papers, they're sitting on benches and chairs, they're taking up spaces. We, I mean, it is, it's a big facility, but there is still, I mean, the, the real estate's price. I mean, people want to sit and have spaces to go, so.
So it's actually a seven-dollar reduction instead of a hike?
Because, yes, and so exactly, yeah. So this, this whole purpose of this is to allow them to come in. So they're, they're not using, they're not dressed to swim.
Right.
And they are not getting in the water at all.
Very good. That answers my question. Thank you.
Any other questions for Joe? I know this was taken to the park board and you had some good discussion at the park board on this, on the fee changes. And was that, and it was approved through the park board?
Yep, and then we brought it to finance last week, and so here we are.
All right. No other discussions? We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay? Motion passes.
Item ten A two, proposed changes to the aquatic center fees. The Public Finance Judiciary and Personnel Committee recommends the fees for the aquatic center be approved as presented. And this did go to park board as well, and they recommended approval as well.
Mayor, move the report be adopted?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to adopt this committee report of proposed changes to the aquatic center fees. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay? Motion passes. Brings us up to new business.
Item thirteen A, appointment of Hannah Schrott to the library board to fill the unexpired term of Drew Glasshoff.
Council members, with your permission, the mayor would like to submit the name Hannah Schrott to you for consideration and appointment to the Columbus Library Board. This nomination is recommended by the city library director and the candidate resides within the Columbus city limits. She is filling the unexpired term of Drew Glasshoff until September twenty twenty-three. Hannah Schrott is a Columbus resident and holds a Bachelor of Arts in Journalism from Western Illinois University. She is employed as a news editor at the Columbus Telegram. She has reported many news stories promoting the services and programs offered by the Columbus Public Library. Hannah has experience listening to opposing viewpoints and responding objectively. She's an avid reader and visits the library regularly to check out books. Hannah is looking to become more involved in the community and desires to gain experience serving on a board. Hannah is interested in serving on the library board to help ensure the library continues to serve the public effectively and efficiently. She understands that libraries are vital to communities, providing necessary access to technology and offering educational resources and programs for all ages. Her fresh perspective and support of libraries would be an asset to our library board. And gentlemen, we need a motion to ratify this appointment.
Move the appointment be adopted?
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay? Motion passes. Hannah's in our audience. Thank you for stepping forward and being willing to serve. All right, we go.
Item thirteen B, application of Foreman Properties LLC for preliminary plot of West Oak Edition, west of sixty-third avenue, north of highway eighty-one. The planning commission recommends approval.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the preliminary plot of West, West Oak Edition be approved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the preliminary plot of the West Oak Edition. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay? Motion passes.
Item thirteen C, public hearing, application of Foreman Properties LLC for final plot and development agreement of West Oak Edition, west of sixty-third avenue, north of highway eighty-one. The planning commission recommends approval.
Mayor, move the public hearing be closed?
Second.
Anyone here, anyone here to, anybody here to speak against this public hearing? Anyone here to speak for this public hearing? Now I'd entertain the closing.
Mayor, move the public hearing be closed?
Second.
Have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay? Motion passes.
Item thirteen C one, public hearing, determine whether West Oak Edition should be within the corporate city limits. The planning commission recommends approval.
Anyone here to speak for this public hearing? Anyone here to speak against this public hearing?
Mr. Mayor, move the public hearing be closed?
We have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. Any, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay? Motion passes.
Item thirteen C two, resolution number R two two dash one four one, approving the final plot development agreement and bringing said addition into the corporate city limits.
Mr. Mayor, move that resolution number R two two dash one four one be adopted?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve resolution number R two two dash one four one. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay? Motion passes.
Item thirteen D, quote from Motorola and the amount of twenty thousand and thirty-three dollars for a repeater for the joint communication center.
Mr. Mayor, I move the quote from Motorola for a repeater be accepted?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve this purchase. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay? Motion passed.
Item thirteen E, UTV and golf cart licensing options in the amount of one thousand eight hundred and seventy-five dollars for multicolor and one thousand one hundred and seventy-five dollars for single-color plates.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the singer, single-colored license plates for UTV golf carts be approved.
I can make a second on that, but I just want to ask a question first. Can I make, ask a question first? Or do I have to say, do we have to have a second before there's discussion?
You can ask a question. It's up to.
Yeah, go ahead.
Are we, are we offering both options to citizens? Is that what this is? Or are we selecting?
We're selecting.
We're, we're selecting a, an option that's in front of us that would replace the ear tags. We have a motion and a second to accept the option of five hundred single-colored plates and the amount of eleven hundred and seventy-five dollars for UTV and golf cart licenses. Any discussion?
I had a couple of questions.
Yes, sir.
Are we talking about one or two plates per vehicle?
I think Chief can answer that by reading the, the information. I think it was one, one plate per vehicle and it would take a sticker for every new year, like a license plate on our car. I'll let you answer, Chief.
Chief Shear, Columbus Police Department. That's correct, Mayor. They'd be similar to what your plates are right now in your vehicles. We'd only require one plate, though. I think the ordinance says it'll be put in a prominent position on the rear of the vehicle so the officers can see it. It was brought to our attention by one of the council members here that the current tags were difficult to see. And so I encouraged my staff to reach out. And we found something similar in North Platte that's worked out very well for them. And, and they, they have a business out there that's similar to a business here in town. So we reached out to a business here in town and they gave us the, the cost for the plates. So it's a one-time cost for the plate, and then it's like fifty cents renewal for the sticker each year. And if they currently have ear tags and they want to turn them in, we're just gonna charge them the difference between the ear tag and the cost of the plate.
Are we gonna have to do anything different in the wording of our existing ordinances to accommodate these tags?
I think we will. And I'd ask that Neil work with us on that. The other thing I've asked you to consider is that do an incremental increase in fees. When this was first discussed, you thought that the fees are way too low. So I gave you some suggestions as to how to implement those fees and whatever you guys decide to do with that.
We'd be going from ten, ten dollars upward to something like fifty dollars or?
Eventually, but I, I don't think, I think it's, yes, I think it's too drastic to do that in one year. But I think we can do that incrementally over several years to get there.
Thank you very much.
Well, a tag wouldn't be covered under the fifty dollars then, right? You would have to pay the fifty plus, once we got to the fifty?
No, no, that tag, the license, when you come in and get it, would be part of that fifty dollars.
And you're saying that fifty dollars might be in three years, four years? Yeah, in getting to that, you would have time to evaluate the effort and cost that is put on the department to do this.
Exactly. Right now, I think, if you do the math, and these are numbered sequentially. And so if we buy five hundred plates, that should last several years. But I think they're about three bucks a plate, doing the math to bring that out. And then fifty cents every year for the sticker that goes on there.
How, how many plates, how many plates do we have out now?
I know you were gonna ask me that. I didn't come prepared to answer that, but I would say less than a hundred.
I have a question too. Is there a timeframe within that those who have the orange tags now that they have to have those changed to the other plates?
We're gonna send them all courtesy. We have their information. We'll send them courtesy letters, tell them to bring them in and exchange them out. And we'll just charge them for the cost of that plate.
And do they, do they have a date that they have to do it by?
You guys, I think, set that when you pass the ordinance. And so we'll give them that, plus whatever time we think is reasonable, probably be thirty days to bring it in and get it taken care of. But we'll make sure that everybody is compliant with that. Yes, John?
Is there any thought about celebrity plates so we can get into people's pockets for their egos?
Oh, we didn't look at that, John. I'm sorry. We didn't look at that. I'm, I'm sure we can look at that in the future, but we didn't look at it.
Leave well enough, leave well enough alone right now.
I just wanted to get over this hump. You know, when you guys passed it, we had to get into a hurry-up mode to, to do some research and to get it done so that we could put it in place. Troy, you got a question?
Yes, Chief. Is it possible, I know initially you have to come out for, every time you renew, every time you come out and inspect the vehicle. If somebody does that the first year and they have a renewal, the second year, is it possible not to do that?
No, we'll ask them to come in because things could have changed. You know, and just like you have maintenance on your vehicles, maybe they're not doing good maintenance on their UTV or their golf cart. We want to make sure that they're road written, street ready when we, we put up, we renew them. That's our way to police that, to make sure that everything is, is good to go. Any other questions?
All right. I appreciate it, Chief.
Yeah, this is a learning curve for us too. So if there's issues, you know, we'll try to deal with those as they come up. But I thought it was a good idea to look into.
Thanks for your work on this.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay? Motion passes.
Item thirteen F, comments from the mayor and city council members. In compliance with the Open Meetings Act, no discussion may be held on this item.
Any council members have comments this evening?
Yes, I do, Mayor. If you'd allow me to give a short comment?
Yes, yes, sir, Mr. Creashe.
As this is my last council meeting representing, representing the second ward, I would have to say it was an honor to serve. In the last eight years, with voter, with voter, voter approval, we have built two viadocks, built a new police station, fire station, and now a new senior citizens center currently is being built. So we did get a few things done these last eight years. I also want to thank the mayor and city council for putting up with me during my medical problems. Keep up the good work and God bless.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman. Councilman.
First of all, I'd like to thank all of the people that came out and voted, both Platte and the city. It's their opportunity to voice their opinions and I, I think we had a nice turnout. Second of all, I'd like to thank the people of the third ward who, who came out and voted for me. Just shows that, that they, they believe in what I'm doing for a fourth term. And then the last thing I'd like to thank is my opponent, Mr. Ackman. He, he, he does, he did something twice now that a lot of people didn't have enough maybe insight to, to come out and do. And I have to be applaud him for that. And I hope he doesn't get discouraged from, from it. And we, we do need the young people to get involved and we need to figure out a way to do that. Obviously, I'm the third youngest person on this council and we're not getting any younger every day. So it would be good if we did have some more people coming forward. So I appreciate everybody's efforts and thank you.
And welcome back on.
Yeah, thanks.
Congratulations.
Yes, Councilman. Happy Thanksgiving.
And also, on Saturday, the young kids will have an opportunity to visit Santa Claus as he comes into town.
You know, you know, you know something about that, don't you?
I have, I, yeah, for some reason, I have firsthand information about that. I'm on personal quotations with this gentleman for some reason, yeah.
Better watch out and be, don't be naughty or nice. Come on.
Schilling, what time is he arriving again, Mr. Schilling?
What time?
What time?
Twelve o'clock.
On Saturday?
Twelve to four on Saturday and Sunday, five to seven on Thursday.
I would just like to add, I, I was honored this evening. Columbus had a visit from Governor Ricketts in town this evening. It was an opportunity for the community to say thank you to the governor for his eight years of service. And that's exactly what it was, just a thank you for what he's done for us and to say we certainly appreciated it. So I was honored to be able to do that and on behalf of all of us here in Columbus. It was very nice. All right, let's move forward to resolutions.
Item fourteen A, resolution number R two two dash one three zero, approving the amendment to the agreement with the Board of Regents of the University of Nebraska on behalf of the University of Nebraska Medical Center for forensic and crime lab testing of cannabis and marijuana items.
Mr. Mayor, I move resolutions number R twenty-two dash one three zero be adopted?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution R two two dash one three zero. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay? Motion passes.
Item fourteen B, resolution number R two two dash one four two, approving the contract with Platte Valley Precast Incorporated in the amount of forty-nine thousand, four hundred and fifty-five dollars and fifty cents for the hangar, floor, and apron rehab building, fourteen oh six project at the airport.
Mr. Mayor, I move the resolution number R twenty-two dash one hundred forty-two be adopted?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution number R two two dash one four two. Any discussion? Yes, sir.
Just a question. Does, is there a map of the airport that exists? So I know we're, there's a lot of moving parts in this airport now and, and is there any way you could provide that to us so we know
Sure.
what's going on and why? And I know what the why is, but just, it just seems like, you know, this is hangar one four oh six, but where in the hell is?
Where is it?
Yeah, and conjunction to the, to the rest of the project.
Instead of just saying it's next to hangar fourteen oh five?
If you, if you could provide that for us, we would appreciate it. Thank you.
All right. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay? Motion passes.
Item fourteen C, resolution number R two two dash one four three, amending the schedule of fees by revising fees for the Pawnee plunge and the aquatic center.
Mr. Mayor, I move for the adoption of resolution number R twenty-two dash one four three.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve resolution R two two dash one four three. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay? Motion passes. Meeting adjourned. Wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving.
Gobble, gobble, gobble.